At 509-397-3435. Whitman Hospital is located on West Fairview Street in Colfax. A nice stretch of weather right through the week. A mostly sunny afternoon for you. The highs today reaching the upper 60s to middle 70s. Pullman and Moscow, 69. Colfax, 70, 73. And Lewiston, the overnight lows in the 40s. More sunshine on Tuesday with the highs tomorrow returning to the upper 60s to middle 70s. Your favorite programs are made possible with financial support from listeners like you and by Pro-Tec Auto Repair. Providing customers with service and car maintenance for 20 years. Pro-Tec is a tire dealer and repair service for foreign and domestic vehicles. Located on Latos Street in Pullman and online at protechauto-repair.com.
Northwest Public Radio, KRFA, 91.7 Moscow-Pullman, KNWV, 90.5 Clarkston-Lewiston, and KNWO, 90.1 Cottonwood-Greenville. A community service of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication at Washington State University. Online at NWPR.org.
D consists of a description and responsibilities related to the new single-stream curbside recycling collection program in Section 2 type of service. A description of roll cart assignment responsibilities in Section 3 under equipment. And the elimination of the prior Section 12 curbside collection recycling bins. Also in your packet is a second extension of an amendments to the 2003 solid waste franchise agreement. This amendment consists of language in Section 13 Term and Renewals amending the term to expire on September 30th, 2035. An ordinance has also been prepared amending Exhibit D and extending and amending the term of the franchise agreement for introduction to city council. Legal staff has advised that no action be taken on these items until 30 days following introduction to city council. Questions on any of the amendments?
Gary, or Walter? Walter?
In Section 2 of D, the third paragraph, it starts, "Roll carts shall be..." Are you there?
Paragraph?
Third paragraph.
Yes.
"Roll carts shall be sturdy, watertight, equipped with heavy-duty wheels, permanently attached closable lids. City shall approve number, type, sizes, and other specific physical requirements of the roll carts." I was a little surprised that color itself is not mentioned. Should it be?
It was in the RFP.
Should it be in the contract document?
Certainly can be. We can add that. It's no big deal. You want to add that in there?
Sure.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt to have it in.
Since there's been a small amount of discussion about it recently.
Okay, so we shall have, "City shall approve the number, type, color, sizes, and other specifics, physical requirements of the roll carts." Okay?
Also somewhere in there, there was mention that people can swap out their bin with no charge for the first 30 days, but then there's no mention about the alternative.
What it would cost after 30 days? I think that's in the fee resolution, is it not?
Yes, that's in the fee resolution. And it's consistent with the language that we put in Exhibit B when we went to the roll cart collection system for the solid waste.
Do you have anything, Gary?
No, sir. It's just I wanted to make sure the council knows that once the council gives direction that the ordinance can be changed or the franchise can be changed, it needs to be authorized by council and the council may consider it after 30 days of that initial instruction.
Okay. Walter?
Regarding the switching out, just to be clear, that's if somebody decides this thing's too big, I need a smaller one, or vice versa. It's not big enough, I need a larger one. So within the first 30 days, they can make that switch once.
Correct, for no charge, yeah.
For no charge. And after that, there's a small charge.
And that's the same way we work with the garbage collection roll carts. If we get a new tenant in, we tell them when they sign up for their bill that, hey, try this out, you know, if there's any question at all, if you need to make an adjustment within that first month, why do it then? And then...
What is the normal charge for switching out?
$18, I believe it is. $18.
$18?
I think I said small charge. I didn't know it was that much.
That's small.
That's in relative scheme of things, but it's not $2.
True. I had a request from Mr. Parks that he had, would like to make some comments. Sir, would you like to come forward?
Thank you. My name is Bill Parks. I live at 1630 Pine Cone Road in Moscow. And I don't see help whoever...
Tim, can you, you know how to operate that? Somebody give him a hand on how to get that going?
Well, I had it. I had the things right here and now they've switched to something else. What do I do? Well, I guess... Well, I had, I had some pictures.
Let's just go ahead and minimize that.
They're up here.
Okay.
Okay. These are the methods used by Waste Management in Huntley, Illinois. And I've got a number of their, of these pictures. Again, I don't know how to move on beyond it, but...
You want to move to other pictures, Bill?
Yes. But, but, but that's, that's okay. You can see what they are. They are identically green things with yellow lids. And these are done by Waste Management. And Waste Management is one of the largest companies in this industry. In fact, it is the largest. And they seem to think that these things would be fine. And that's how they do it. Okay? You can see the recycling only on the top of it. But I'm not here to talk about water under the dam, though I think, I think the council made a terrible mistake and it's going to cost the city of Moscow $125,000 and cost LSI $125,000. What I'm here to talk about is extending the contract. It seems to me that what you're saying to LSI is, you screwed up and the penalty you're going to receive is we're going to extend your contract for another 12 or 13 years, so 20 years out. I'd like to point out that these contracts should be bid on. And if, if it comes out in 20, I think it's 2023 right now, that would be an opportunity for others to bid on it. Instead, you're going to take it out for 20 years. That means that nobody can bid on it. And it's a, it's going to be a case of heads, LSI wins, tails, Moscow loses. Because if, in let's say, five years or six years, this turns out to be an extremely profitable operation, then it's not open for bid. You're going to have to wait 20 years. And how are you going to recover the fact that they have a completely uneconomic contract for the state of Idaho? I'd suggest that you should drop it. Because suppose, suppose it turns out to be quite unprofitable.
Put your phone over here and join us.
Well...
That's all your video or audio?
I've got a bunch of them, but you see the point.
Yeah. Just join us here.
Okay. So if, if it turns out to be unprofitable, then LSI will come to the city council and ask for a change. But if it turns out to be extremely profitable, LSI will just shut their mouth and go get lots of money for 20 years. I would suggest that you, this needs to be bid more often. There are many Waste Management companies around the country. And while I understand the desire to keep it local, it seems to me that that local should be after they have won a bid and not just automatically renewed. So I'd like to urge you and the council not to extend this, but instead, if anything, to make it shorter. You're saying, you screwed up and therefore, we're going to penalize you by giving you a 20-year, new 20-year contract. I think that's a very, very dangerous operation to do that. I think, I think it's, it's short-sighted. I think that a number of people here in, in the city government have looked at it and not recognized that there is a benefit to the people of Moscow to have these things rebid periodically. And to put it out 20 years, the last one you did was 20 years again. Why do you do 20 years when you might get a very competitive bid in a lot less time? I just think it is a philosophical mistake.
Well, I can respond on the reason that franchises are typically anywhere from, I think 50-year franchises, you can go up to 50-years, Rod, is that correct? Yeah, the purpose, tend to, 10 and up. The purpose of franchises is that the public's interests are served with having predictable service in utilities like water, sewer, electricity, telephone, typically franchises are let, so you don't have multiple lines going through your city. That you have typically one set of, it's a non-exclusive franchise, but we're not a big enough market that you can usually have more than one vendor. So having non-cluttered rights-of-way with a lot of different telephone transmission lines, water and sewer transmission lines, so on and so forth. In the realm of sanitation, the idea is that you have competitive service, that you have service that is built upon, and you're getting good service. We went out to bid in 1992, I believe it was, and LSI competed with a couple of different vendors. One was Waste Management, and I believe the other one was Browning Ferris, if I, if memory serves correctly. And LSI won that because they had the best price and they had the best service. They also happened to be the franchisee prior to us letting that bid. Council has had over the years, from curbside recycling, a bunch of pilot programs, so on and so forth, has looked at LSI's service and determined that they wanted to renew that franchise. This is just the same thing. The current franchise runs through 2023, so the extension is not 20 years, the extension is 12 years. The idea is there's a lot of public investment in a new roll cart program, our recycling program, and the new single-stream recycling program. So the idea is to get some consistency and continuity. Every year when we do the budget, Tim does a survey of solid waste rates in surrounding communities. Those are put up for comparison. Our rates compare very favorably with those of surrounding communities. So as far as price protection, the council, the contract that we have with them regulates the price that will be charged for a new, new service such as single-stream recycling. LSI prepared a proposal, brought it into council, council approved it. It already had the pricing, the fee structure was built upon that pricing, it was negotiated, the length of time, the type of cart, so on and so forth. So it's just the council determined it was in the best interest of the public to continue with that. With that, I certainly can see the point that you may get a different type of service, you may get better or less favorable pricing by bidding it out, but there's also a real public good to getting continuity of service.
Response, Walter? Walter?
Other than, I appreciate the input on it and bring up some interesting issues, but I come down the side, as the city has, that the continuity and predictability is a good thing to have in place and hold on to, especially with the cost of, potential new cost if a new vendor comes in of the infrastructure and all the other associated facets of setting up a new franchise.
Mr. Parks, I appreciate your comments very much. You know, I've thought a lot about this myself versus continuity of the thing, consistency of it, a known value that is favorable to the current markets in the area, extending the contract out, assuring us of the continued value that we have, as opposed to, as opposed to having a monopoly, if you will, one company monopolize the entire, for however long it might be. You know, there's some trade-offs. And I certainly agree with you that there is a potential there that if it was to go out for bid, that there's a possibility that we could get even more competitive bid than what we have now. But then there's also the other possibility, and that is that the bids would not be as attractive as we have right now. One of the things, as you know, is as a, as a company, if you can get a long-term bid, a long-term contract, your bidding price is more stable as opposed to if you're not guaranteed a long-term contract.
If I may point out, if you had chosen Waste Management, you would have saved a half a million dollars, a quarter of a million dollars, just because Waste Management would have given you those yellow tops, which it seems the council was unable, unable to even process as a potential methodology. And so here's the world's, the United States' largest company doing something entirely different. It would seem to me appropriate to at least look at what the others are.
You're actually, you're incorrect in your comment there, Mr. Parks, because we did look at the possibility of different colored lids. Walter?
And LSI could have provided different colored lids. So Waste Management doesn't have an exclusive on different colored lids.
I, I understand, but...
Different colored lids were an option put before us and we decided that they, we did not believe they would work well enough to give us the best possible non-contaminated single-stream cycle.
I understand that you feel that, but I think when you look at the largest Waste Management companies that are all over the United States, they seem to believe it. But if you guys believe that the council is smarter than a couple of extremely large companies who have been doing it a different way, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
I have no idea if the different colored lids are Waste Management's idea or the city of whatever Illinois.
Well, I looked through other cities where there were other different colored lids, because I just happened to be driving there and I saw that they did the same way with different colored lids, probably to show the difference between the towns so that you couldn't steal the one from Huntley and use it in Elgin or something.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move this on to the regular, regular agenda.
Gary, just to be, so that I'm, if I may...
Yes, sir.
Make sure I'm clear. This just goes to the full council regular agenda as a explanatory item with no action?
Counsel...
The cause of the state law that requires a 30-day waiting period before action can be taken after presentation?
Exactly. The idea is to give public notice that this is an action the council intends to take. And there's a 30-day window, if you will, before the council can take action on that item.
Okay, so this will not be an action item at council?
The only action item will be to put out the notice that you intend to extend the franchise after a 30-day period.
Look down really low, Bill. I think your thumb drive is ruined.
Thank you.
Right it? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, let's move on to the next item then. That's the Southeast Lift Station Emergency Power Bid Results and the Contract Award. And Scott Bontrager is going to present that. We haven't seen Scott for a while, so glad you're still around, bud.
Yeah. Good afternoon. So this will be our next emergency power generator that we'll be installing on a facility here in town. This one's for the Southeast Sewer Lift, excuse me, Southeast Sewer Lift District Station here. The current generator out there right now is a portable, trailer-mounted, 60-kilowatt generator that's from 1982. And it was one that the manufacturer doesn't even support the particular engine anymore, so parts are getting a little bit harder to come by. I mean, any parts that we get now for repairing it is pretty much used parts that the manufacturer's trying to scrap together for us. So this facility itself, I mean, the facility is a Southeast Sewer Lift, Lift Station. That's not, not city-owned, but we have for our convenience with power outages out there, we have a backup generator for the convenience of when things go out and what type of damage it can cause if we don't have the lift station maintain an operation. So this particular project was budgeted and design put out to bid. We put out bids on September 25th, solicited contractors here, local and also outside. Of the responsive bids, we got two responsive bids, one from GROP up here in Moscow, Idaho, at a bid of $48,434. And then one from Strom Electric in Troy for $49,990. Whereas the engineer's estimate for this project was $68,600, so bids came in pretty favorable for us. So with that, our, our recommendation is for the acceptance of the bid for this to GROP at $48,434. And authorizing, authorizing staff approval for change orders in an amount not to exceed 10% of the contract at $4,834.40.
Okay. Mark?
Does that include all the electrical connections that need to go on as well?
Includes all the work and the panels and everything else.
Walter?
So the generator that's out there is the city's?
Yes.
And it was placed by the city because the city wanted backup power?
Yes.
Is it, it's sitting on a, it's not, is it hardwired in or is it sitting on a trailer with a plug laying on the ground?
I don't have an answer for that, but it is on the trailer. I don't know if it's plugged in for an automatic switchover.
I'm waiting to see if we have another answer in the room.
Lois Tyler.
Gentlemen, yeah, it is, it is wired in for automatic out there.
So it's hardwired in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And it belongs to us and we're just replacing ours? It's not a Southeast Moscow Sewer District product?
No, that belongs to the city and we're replacing it.
So what do we do with the old stuff? We surplus it out and auction?
Yeah, typically, typically, yeah, we, we surplus it and either, yeah, if we find the best way to get the city the most money, which typically we put it out through the auction.
Okay. Go ahead.
How does this $48,000 number compare to the other standby generators we've bought recently? I know there may be differences between, between them, but ball cart?
Yeah, very comparable. The last one was right around the same range, same amount of manipulation for all the other electrical equipment and everything, so...
Not especially high and not especially low?
No.
About what we'd expect it.
Yep.
And then one last question. We, we did this for Fire Station Number One...
Mm-hmm.
Quite a few months ago. Has there been some delay with getting that accomplished?
There was delay in certain parts out there. So like the stainless steel exhaust system had to be special ordered from Portland, and that one took a little bit while. Typical bid on a generator for like this, depending on the season, is usually six to eight weeks. You know, when you get into the busy part of the season, it may take longer.
Okay, so we don't anticipate any...
We don't anticipate this one. I mean, this is outside the normal season.
Council approves, you sign the purchase order, it gets in in a month or two?
Yeah, and this contract actually allows them, if they choose to, you know, extend out, once they start work, they have to continue work, but it allows them to extend out to the end of April. So if they choose not to start this fall, you know, and just get the generator or everything right now, and they want to come back and actually do the electrical work and pour the concrete and everything, when it's favorable weather, say in the spring, they can.
You good?
I'm good with it.
You good? I'm good. All right, move that forward, just on the consent agenda then?
Sure.
With the recommendation of approval.
If I could ask for a second too, with your indulgence, I neglected the beginning of the meeting to introduce Mark Brigham, our new HR director, took his office today.
Ah, I wondered who that young man was. Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
So are you here making sure we're doing everything right from an HR aspect?
I am. First meeting, I better be here.
This meeting is now closed. No, not really. Thank you, welcome. Okay, next item is the lease agreement between the city of Moscow and Sherem Clyde, presented by Dwight Curtis.
You're back.
I'm back, yeah.
On a personal note, can you hang out till the end of this meeting? I have a question I need to ask you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you having me back again for this. There are no changes to this from the last time we met. Just going through various information since then, we've just come back to the same conclusion that this is the best option for the city at this time. I've talked to the, Mr. Clyde, and he's fine with this. And we're just asking to go forward. It's basically leasing 20 of those 28 acres and at $70 an acre, $1,400 a year income for those years that it would be fallow, that there would be no fee assessed to that.
So, so that is a change, the fallow?
That was, that was before us this last time.
Okay, I didn't remember that being...
Yeah.
...part of the previous...
Mr. Clyde indicated was that in dry years, when you can have winter crops on, they can be seeded in the fall when the land's dry, then he would get an arable crop off it. However, in, you have to have a crop rotation, and it's too wet in that area to seed a spring crop, so he would just let it lie fallow that year, which is a farming practice they used to engage in quite a bit around here. Since they've now gone to legume-type crops as pulse crops, they typically cycle them in and out without it lying fallow. But in this situation, because of the particular lay of the land with that low, Mr. Clyde's proposing that he just let the land lay every third year.
Walter's question, or as I understood it though, was this question of not paying him for the years when it's laid fallow, was that in the previous agreement that we had brought forward?
Not the original, but this last time that we were here, that was one of the amended changes, yes.
And if I may... And the eight acres, the floodable or flooding eight acres, we would not pay for?
He wouldn't pay us for it.
Would he farm them when he can?
He will still go ahead and plant that. The issue has been that he just never knows when he's going to lose most of that crop or not. And it's still, it doesn't cost him much more to go ahead and plant it and take care of the weeds that way than if you just don't plant anything and take care of the weeds later. So they just go ahead and plant it and, and it just, business as usual, just depends on the weather.
That way mitigating weed control and so on and so forth. And that's our main concern, is that it's, the maintenance is done on it, so...
And I think it also provides the revenue stream back to the city and doesn't show preferential treatment for Mr. Clyde versus any other farmer who might want to lease that property for cultivation. So I think it's an even-handed approach that avoids other potential problems later on and provides the city with a minor amount of money for, for leasing out. I'm, I'm good with it.
I think, I think we ought to do it. I felt and feel that the city, the public, the citizens should get something for a farmer working their land. It's done by all kinds of people that don't actively farm, but they lease it out in some fashion or other, and I think the city should also.
Along with the majority, we'll move this forward with a recommendation for approval. And that'll have to go on the regular agenda though, correct?
No.
Not go on consent, okay?
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
That's done then. All right. The last item, regular item that we have is the Southeast Moscow Sewer District Contract Renewal Process that will be presented by Les McDonald. However, I asked Lois Pritchard if she would come forward first. Walter has a question he'd like to ask, and you may or may not have the answer.
Ms. Pritchard is the president of the Southeast Moscow Sewer District Board, if I'm correct.
Correct.
You're spending a lot of time in council chambers lately.
Probably, yes, I am.
Welcome again. We spent a couple and a half hours last, I think it was Thursday, talking about the city, the district, the fact that the contract has expired but is working under extension until January...
Of '16.
30 of '16. And that, some council members, probably myself, had indicated it's time to stop extending and to get a new contract in place. A good bit of the discussion on Thursday had to do with the fact that in 2008, the district had formally asked the city to allow the district to... and eight, the district had formally asked the city to allow the district to dissolve, go out of business, and the city totally take over not only the current operation and maintenance, but just everything that has to do with it. We did not receive on Thursday, Ms. Pritchard, what I felt was a direct response voluntarily as to whether or not that two thousand and eight request for dissolution is still on the table. And I'm not trying to pressure you into give us an answer right this minute, but if it is, the discussion I think needs to be with the council, what do we want to do about that? If it isn't, the discussion with the council needs to be the new contract.
I wished I could give you a definite answer. I haven't really had time as, since our Thursday and today, I am putting our board out to meet to discuss for sure what they want to do. I would say the two thousand and eight is not on the board, because at that time, as you know, we could not come to agreement how to handle it, and I don't think those problems have totally gone away. I have been busy this weekend, as you know, you've talked to one of my board members and past board members since Thursday, and my phone's been going and my email's been going, so I have been on it, but I will be meeting with my board shortly. We're trying to find a date that all of us can meet. At the present time, if it was up to me, I'd say it's definitely off the board, but I have to, to ask my board too, because I see from the workshop, things were brought out that was not totally brought out in two thousand and eight, that I think my board totally understand or understood all the ramifications if it went dissolved versus the new contract. And there's many things in the new contract, not in the old, that would benefit both the city and the sewer district that we're talking about.
Okay, fair enough. And again, no intent to pressure an answer, just?
Just clarification.
Clarification, you know, one answer sends us one direction, another answer another, and we don't know gives us information about how to proceed, I think.
Right, and I can understand that. I wish I could give a clear answer, but until I talk to my board, I'm sure you can understand that.
Absolutely. I think, Lois, I think you gave a very responsible answer. I appreciate that, and we'll just move forward with Les' presentation on this, and, and we'll keep one foot in front of the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And you're, I presume you're welcome to stay if you wish, or while Les presents or not?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, go ahead, Les.
Well, certainly, as alluded to, we had a workshop on Thursday between the city council and the board of the southeast Moscow sewer district to talk about the question as to whether or not the city should consider taking over the district's assets and operations and the possible dissolution of the district. Much discussion occurred, a lot of different options were discussed in terms of different ways to, that we could proceed collectively. In the end, staff came away with an understanding of what we think we were hearing in terms of direction, and so the intent today was to kind of solidify that understanding, make sure we are actually going down the path that the council intended during that discussion. In short, the understanding that we came away with was that there was a desire to proceed with the district in its current form and the relationship between the city and the district continuing, but that there would be a new services agreement between the city of Moscow and the southeast sewer district. There are a number of items that would need to be addressed within that new contract that were discussed during that workshop. Some items are already in the new draft agreement that was put together back in June of two, of two thousand and fourteen. Some others came out during the workshop that we would need to add to that draft before it comes back to the board and to the council for consideration. So in your packets today, I did include a copy of that June twenty-fourteen draft agreement that was put together. For the most part, it followed the original agreements from eighty and ninety-one. There were some additions, primarily, I think it's section three, dealing with out-of-district flows, which is a kind of a newer issue that has come up as the city has grown and, and spread out towards the district boundaries. Of course, that was not a consideration back in nineteen, nineteen eighty. So that new section will address those issues of flow generated within city limits that would need to pass through district facilities and ultimately back into the city for wastewater treatment. There are a number of different ways to address that issue, particularly when it comes to things like how compensation occurs, what kind of fees are charged, you know, for what we call wheeling of flow, pass-through flow through another entity. There is one model for that method, a model in the agreement that addresses that. There are others that we can talk about, and Lois and I have chatted about a few of those even today, some potential options, but it's something that we would need to address eventually is how we want to handle pass-through flows in a new contract. Also in your packet is, is a list of items that we jotted down from the meeting. These would be items that we need to touch on as we move forward with a new contract. Doesn't necessarily mean that all of them would end up in the final contract version, but they are topics that we should probably talk about along the way. There's the one, at least one that I'm not sure the district cared for during the workshop, so I'll touch on that, but the others, I think, were ones that probably everybody was generally in agreement upon. Those included the support and assistance for district administrative services. Should recall, one of the things the district talked about was that they really have very little revenue coming in because it's all processed through the city, and so they have a pretty light bank account when they do have expenses for administrative operations, whether it's hiring legal assistants on a contract or things that they have to do with, you know, reporting to the state or things of that nature. And so, something that we could put in the contract is how the city could perhaps take over some of those administrative services, and, and we're going to meet and talk about what those potentially could be, but also perhaps how there could be a portion of the revenue stream for the whole operation going to the district to be able to address some of those administrative costs that they, that they see. Adjusting district customer surcharge to address additional district administrative costs that, that's related to that. Part of it is, is the duties, part of it is how we deal with, with the financial aspects. There may be some adjustments in the surcharge that the district patrons see. Right now, it's a dollar per month. In the new contract, we're proposing two dollars per month because of increased cost with our administration. There could be some other adjustment to that surcharge to address the financial aspects that I just touched on for the district. This third one is the one that the district may not care for, but we'll, we'll chat about it further, which was provision of reduction of district boundaries upon district property being annexed into the city of Moscow. The intent of this one was to address the issue of trying not to create more of the dual authority within certain areas of the city and the district. We have the example of Ridgeview number one, within the city limits, within the district boundary. We prefer not to duplicate that situation in the future, but we know we're going to run into each other in the future, so how do we, how do we deal with that? So this particular provision would suggest that perhaps the district boundary could shrink as the city annexes into the district. Obviously, that can create some concerns, and it's something we'll want to chat about along the way. The fourth one is to address options for city providing revenue to the district for pass-through flows. I touched on this a little bit. If there are flows that are generated within the city limits, but they need to tie to the district's system and pass through their system to come back to the city, how exactly do we address that? What do you do with connection fees? What do you do in terms of any type of an ongoing lease of space or use of space fee that might be paid to the district for using their conveyance system? And there's, again, there's a number of models, how we could approach that, so when we bring this back, I will try to summarize some of those different model options. We'll have one in the draft contract, but I'll have some information on other options that could be available if the council and the district would like to consider those. And then finally, a fairly general district and city collaborating on common issues relating to sewer maintenance and operations. That's really just kind of updating the cooperative efforts between the, the city and the district and making sure that we're working together on how the district system is going to operate and is maintained by the city, but also then how the city's system will expand in the future and intertie with the district facilities. So those are really the bullet items that, that we picked up at staff level, coming out of the workshop, and the items that we would want to address as we come back to you here in the coming weeks with a new version of this draft contract. Any questions?
What's the contemplated duration of the agreement?
Most likely, we would do something similar to what was in the original two agreements, which would be a ten-year term that is renewable upon approval by both entities. Typically, ten years is, you know, a pretty good, pretty good term. It's long enough that there's certainty for both parties. It's not so long that you get locked into something that, you know, is, becomes unpalatable for either party over the long term. Obviously, if there's something within the ten-year period that the, that comes up that the parties want to modify, then, you know, we always have that option. And then, you know, certainly updating at the ten-year period to address new, new issues that may arise is, is an option as well.
Questions, Walter?
I've, I've mentioned this to Les and to Rod Hall already. Paragraph two of section one of both the existing agreement and the proposed agreement that's in our packet would make Faulkner proud. There's a, there's a period at the end of it, and that's the only place I can find one that runs about a half a page. Where it says?
Second page.
Second, the bottom of the first page, city agrees, item two, to maintain operating, and I'm not about to read it all. Operate, keep in good shape, good repair?
This is one that pertains to if there is a failure of the system?
Major failure.
The district's role and responsibility, and at what level that, that comes to play. And yes, we've talked about this, and this is a challenging paragraph as it's written, something we need to look at again.
Yeah, there, there are ways to interpret whether the comma where it lies means one thing or the other. My point being, I believe that's at least one paragraph that needs some attention to make it clearer to all parties what it means. So that, that's, I mean, there may be others that are, that's just not a very well-written paragraph. Other than that, Wayne, I, I would just, just point out that, you know, Les' list of things to be considered in, in looking at a new contract is, is, I don't believe, a, an all-inclusive list. There are other things that will come up, there will be details of things. This is going to be a complicated process, and I'd be amazed if we can get it done by January thirty with Thanksgiving and Christmas falling somewhere in the middle.
Which year?
We shall see.
The question I have is one for a clarification on a paragraph. That's under section four, the non-district flow conveyance, and that's item number eight. The city shall pay the district for all new connections to the city's system that contribute flow to district facilities at the time of connection to the city's system. The payments shall be a one-time charge of seventy percent of the adopted district connection fees in effect at the time of the connection to city's system. I'm assuming that this would apply to an area that's been annexed into the city that does not, is not in the district. We have new homes built, which sounds like in the Rolling Hill subdivision. The city has a fee that we charge every home for hookup. Apparently, the district also has a fee that they charge.
Actually, there is a fee.
Are they charging? These new homes get popped with both those connection fees?
The, the way the current system is structured in the current agreement, there is one general facilities charge paid by each new connection. The district and the city share in that fee. And the reason for that is because there are connections that are made within the district to district facilities, so they should have a portion of it, and the city is then treating flow and has capital needs associated with that treatment, and so then we should have a portion of it. So there is a split of those connection fees or general facilities charges today. In the draft that's before you, and, and this is one of those areas, they say this is one model of, of payment, and there are others. In the draft that's before you, what I was looking at is, okay, now we're talking, as you said, about properties that are within city limits but not within the district. So like any other property within city limits, they would pay a general facilities charge to the city of Moscow for our capital needs and capacity in the system. However, they then pass through the district facilities and puts wear and tear on district facilities and uses capacity within district facilities, so the district should also have some form of compensation to address that. The way this is currently structured, and, and it is draft, and, and just remember that, is that the city would charge one hundred percent of its general facilities charge, the city would retain that. The city would also, because we're administering the contracts, charge the seventy percent of the district's connection fee and transfer that to the district for use of their system.
And the district's connection fee is how much?
It's the same as the city's by our current contract. So the, the bottom line of all of that, and this is where you want to think about this, is it's a one hundred and seventy percent of our current GFC for those that would build in the city but pass to the district's system. That's one method. There are others, and we can talk about those further, but that's what's currently in this document.
Okay, let me, for clarification, I'll try to simplify this a little bit. First of all, the owner of the property has only assessed one hookup fee?
One point seven.
Pardon me?
In, in, in these cases we're talking about, city passing through district, it would be one point seven times the hookup fee.
One point seven times?
Yes. And, and the one goes to the city and the point seven goes to the district. As, as currently proposed.
The current in-effect agreement?
Yes. Current in-effect agreement.
Someone hooking in and going through the district's system would pay one, to the city, one hundred percent of the city's current hookup fee?
Correct.
And all, and the district makes no charge?
Does not make an additional charge, that's correct.
The city doesn't, the district charges nothing, the city charges a hundred percent. The city then remits three hundred and fifty dollars?
Under the agreement.
For each of those hookups to the district?
Yes.
That's not, that's not what I heard.
That, well, that's, that's the, the split.
The current contract at this moment?
What was the one point seven that you're referring to?
That's what's in this draft.
That's in this?
It's in this draft.
So that's change?
That's where we've moved forward to for pass-through flows. Now Walter's talking about is connections that occur within the district's system.
Right.
They pay one fee, so they pay a one hundred percent of the general facilities charge. Their connection fee is the same as our general facilities charge, okay, so it's the same number.
It's one time?
They pay it one time, and under the current contract, the district then should receive three hundred and fifty dollars of that amount.
Which is seventy percent.
Which is not seventy percent. The three fifty dates clear back to nineteen?
It was just a flat fee.
It dates clear back to nineteen eighty-one?
Okay.
When our connection fees were five hundred dollars, and they got three fifty, the city got one fifty. That has never been changed. So today, we're charging eighteen hundred dollars, or thereabouts, and the district's getting three fifty.
They're still only getting three hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, which is inequitable, right? And so, when we, we've taken a look at this and said, you know, that, that ratio doesn't work because it's collection within their system, it's their system, they should get a larger chunk than that. And when we've run through the numbers, what we got to is that, well, we, they, the district should receive about seventy percent of the current fee that's charged, and the city should receive about thirty percent, just based on the systems that are being used. That's where the seventy comes from, and so I use that in this new version to get to that seventy percent figure to say, hey, seventy percent was a number that we felt was appropriate the district received for use of their conveyance system, and that's where that came from.
Also, just by wordsmithing, it says the city shall pay district for all new connections to city's system, which sounds backwards. Shouldn't that be connections from the city's system?
No.
That contribute flow to the district facilities?
If you're talking about properties within the city that pass through the district, they're tying to city infrastructure. We collect it, we carry it to the district, and then it passes into the district's system. So it should be, and, and unless I'm thinking of a different spot, but it should be that?
Paragraph eight. Where it has the city paying the district for connections to the city's system?
That contribute flow to district facilities. Yes, that is correct, because they would tie into our pipe.
It reads backwards to me. I'm, I'm with Art, except I'm not sure it reads backwards, I'm just sure it doesn't make good sense. And, and this is detail that we'll need to work out, and I don't know that we want to get into this, this afternoon, but what it, just to finish- get into this, this afternoon, but what it, just to finish it, since Wayne, Wayne brought up paragraph eight. It says, "The city shall pay the district for all new connections to the city's system." Now, we're talking about a, we're talking about Ridgeview Two.
Sure.
It's been annexed into the city. It is not part of the district at this time.
Good example.
It will have a sewer system, those, that sewer system has to take the wastewater into the district in order to get it back to the city, because there's no other, other than pumping it over the hill, there's no way to do it.
It'll be a city-owned sewer system.
The city's going to pay the district for all new connections in that, in that subdivision that contribute flow to the district, which they will.
Yes.
The payment shall be a one-time charge of seventy percent of the adopted district connection fee in effect at the time. The district, to my knowledge, doesn't have a connection fee at this time. They, they have the city, whatever the city's fee is, is what it is, and we charge that city fee if you're out on Linville Road and not in the city.
In, in the agreements between the city and the district, it specifies that the district's connection fee shall be equivalent to the city's general facilities' charge. And there are resolutions by the district back in the nineteen eighties that state that.
Okay.
That, so they do have a connection fee. It is the same amount as ours. It's charged one time.
So, the city does not charge a connection fee in the district, at, under the present contract?
In essence, we're charging the district's connection fee because we process the permits.
I'm going to drop it there and wish them all good luck.
Yep.
And, and we'll, we'll take that, I mean, it, this is good feedback, because when, as we go back through this, we'll look at it from that perspective to see if there's some clarifications that we can make to help with some of that language.
Reminds me of paragraph two, section one.
Okay, we, uh, this, uh, committee will receive the information, and I think you know the direction that you need to go. We need some, we need some cleanup work in that and some, and some clarifications.
Is this committee only, Gary? Doesn't need to go to council?
It was really up to, if the committee is...
I don't know that this is ready to go to council yet.
No, we would go to council with the same report saying, is this the direction you want to go? If the committee is convinced that that is what they heard, then we're prepared to move on from this committee's direction.
I don't want to get bogged down in this kind of discussion at the council level.
I don't either.
I mean, the three of us are having trouble with it. We bring in three more council people, Lord and owners, what happened.
We'll proceed then.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois, appreciate your coming. Well, okay.
Reports?
Reports, we have a couple of reports. What are you spying about? What? I'm sure about that. Well, first one we're going to have, we have Alicia Anderson is here, and she's talking about extension of the brownfield assessment grant.
Bill's joining me today also. We had a couple of updates with both of our, the urban renewal district and the city of Moscow, so we'll update you on both today. The city of Moscow had approximately forty to forty-three thousand dollars left in our brownfield coalition assessment grant that we applied for several years ago. We're going into the fifth year of the project. And we actually had a property owner that came forth interested in looking at the balance of the funding. We had thought that we would probably just close it out when it ended at nine thirty, but we were able to go ahead and get another extension for one year. I don't think we'll need that much time, but it will allow us to work with one other property owner and hopefully spend the rest of the money. So, that extension was approved by EPA two weeks ago, I think. And we're still using up some of the money. We had two pots of money, some in hazardous and then some in petroleum, and we're still doing a little bit of work on the petroleum side on the Sharp property. And so, we'll continue to keep going so that we can attempt to use everything up and make the best use of it. So...
Walter, the last time you were here talking about brownfields.
Mm-hmm.
Was that not, was that not to advise us that it's all over as of September 30? We've got some money left, but we've got no use for it, and therefore, we're out of here?
And since that time, we had another property owner come forth with a project that DEQ's also working on, so...
So, is this a report item, Gary, or is this a request of council to allow extension?
Extends 30, Captain.
Well, EPA's already extended it.
That's one side of the contract. The last report, I'm, I'm not, I, I, maybe I'm being picky. The last thing the council was told, I think, was it expires September 30 of 2015. We've got forty-something thousand dollars left, but no use for it. That's where we stand. The council said, okay, thank you. I understand somebody subsequently came forward and wants to extend. Do your staff not need to come back to the council and say, we've had this happen and we wish to request extension? Or we, we've requested and gotten positive feedback, and we want the council to agree to extend?
Not extension.
Yeah, I don't believe we've asked for extensions in the past from council, have we?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't ask for an actual signature from the mayor. I just write a letter in request, and it's been granted. Had it asked for that signature, we would have brought it forth.
I don't know that I have a problem with it. It's just a matter of when we, when we, when we last closed the book, we thought, I thought, that we were getting out of the brownfields business. And I don't know that I have a big problem with getting, stepping back into it, but...
I think it's how you interpreted it. My interpretation of that report was it was simply an advisory thing that, hey, you know, we've got forty thousand left, and we really don't see any place to put it right now. It closes out September of sixteen, so we're, we're probably going to be sitting here with forty thousand we can't spend. Now, all of a sudden, now we've got an opportunity that it's, and you're just coming back in another advisory capacity, saying, hey, now we do have the opportunity to go ahead and continue to spend those funds. Does that sound right?
Yes, the only thing different than what you said there was that it was going to close on nine thirty fifteen. They've given us a one-year extension to nine thirty sixteen. So, yes, at the point that which I reported to you previously, we did not have a property owner that we had met with or anyone that was interested, but then it did change after that. And so, we had like two days left to move forward and get that extension request in.
And we do, not often, but if we get into a grant situation where we will request an extension for reporting, a request of extension so that we can finish out the contract, so on and so forth.
But that's different.
Well, I'm not, so...
Different from being told, it's done, we're done, we're over. And, and, and then a report item that we're not. I just, it just felt, feels to me like this should be a council action item to change what I believed we had, where we had been. That's all.
Okay.
And I'm not saying I got a problem.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I guess the way we looked at it, it's the same program, it's the same agreement, everything, just rather than terminating at one time, leaving excess monies, gave us an additional year. They didn't require additional actions, so we didn't engage in it.
My question at the last report was, can't you find somewhere to spend it?
Uh, that time, we didn't have any.
And, and if we may clarify, this is not additional or new property. So, this is an existing property.
Yes.
That had previously had assessments completed for the Dumas Warehouse demolition work. At that point in time, they were not able to do any confirmational sampling underneath the buildings because they were actively being demolished. And so, that property owner still needs to fill in some data gaps for sampling underneath those, those structures, potentially some cleanup planning and potentially some confirmational sampling after that cleanup occurs. So, we're not introducing a new, a new property into the project. This is just helping assist that project that currently has a buyer with an offer on the site for redevelopment to be able to get to closing through the VCP program. So, we're not really expanding it or adding new properties. It's just helping this one property owner through to a transaction to promote the ability for that property to redevelop, so...
And just to finish it, I, I think if it had been said, I know the last time we were here, we told you. However, it might not have struck me as what?
Okay, Art?
I'm good with it. I'd say use it up.
Thank you very much. Spend the money.
Well, we just, we had another update also. The, we had an opportunity to request additional funding from EPA for the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency Cleanup Grant for Sixton Jackson. No, because we had a cost waiver in the match previously. And so, we just wanted to let you know as an update to both of the brownfield awards that we were able to receive an additional sixty-six thousand, sixty-two, I have no contacts and I can't read with them, sixty-two four oh four, for funding to finish up the sixty...
Six thousand?
This is terrible.
Sixty-six.
Zero. Sixty-two four oh four.
Sixty-two thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
I apologize. I'm testing new contacts, and these ones definitely not working because I can't read.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Want to give it to us?
Yes, I'll take it.
So, that pushes the total available for cleanup of Sixton Jackson to?
To about a hundred and eighty-two thousand for cleanup on the site. Remediation will begin fairly soon, I think, as of tomorrow. Construction fencing will, will go up on the site.
Appreciate it, my next question.
Yes. As of, as of tomorrow, construction fencing should be going up on the site. We're just awaiting for the final historical and tribal letters to come in this week, and then we'll be able to provide a notice to proceed on construction. Excavation work should probably take about two weeks in total time for the, what we're calling Phase One, which is the excavation export and the sanitary sewer connection construction. Phase Two includes the groundwater pumping, extraction, and treatment system. We, the agency will be awarding that contract on Thursday morning this week to Terographics and Strata for that phase of remediation. So, that will follow the excavation with the overall goal of having that system installed before the, I would say, before Christmas this year.
And that grant is scheduled to close on eight thirty sixteen. Eight thirty sixteen. However, we anticipate closing that one out early so that we can move forward with the property transactions.
The URA can move forward with the property transactions.
Okay, the, the, this is a grant to the city.
Grant to the URA.
Grant to the agency.
A grant to the URA.
Yeah, it's merely an informational report.
Okay, all right. I wasn't, wasn't sure what the relationship was.
Up until we got to the point of actually doing the cleanup, the Coalition Assessment Grant was funding this project through cleanup planning, and now we're transitioning directly into the cleanup grant that was awarded to the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And our last report, Steve Schulte is going to be presenting the, it's a right-of-way vegetation trimming presentation.
We've got pictures.
Pictures.
Move some graphs and cover glossy photographs.
Gentlemen, appreciate you guys taking a minute to hear about our right-of-way trimming. It was requested that we bring this back. We passed, I think you'll recall, the council adopted a new policy last year with regard to the right-of-way tree trimming with some updates to our tree trimming program that, that the Public Works Department engages in. And one of the requests of the council was that we bring this back after we'd gone through the cycle for a year and give a report on, on how it went. And so, that's what Steve Schulte, our street supervisor, and I are here to do today, is to talk about the 2015 right-of-way trimming program and, and how it went.
This was year four?
This is, this is year five of our, of our trimming program, year one of the updated trimming program.
Okay.
We, we initiated the trimming programs, Walter mentioned, five years ago, and it's something that we've been refining ever since. The right-of-way trimming is pretty important for a lot of reasons, not just aesthetic reasons, but more so even maintenance reasons, so that we can get up against the curb line with street sweepers, so that moving trucks and delivery trucks can drive without taking out branches, so that we can have mail delivery, snow removal, that we're not pushing parked cars further out on the road. A lot of reasons that, that we've been through several times. And so, our, our tree trimming program is one that, that we're pretty proud of. It's, it's worked pretty well for us. We divide the city into four areas, and we go on a rotation through each area. And, you know, with all of our programs and policies, we, we try to position ourselves as an ally rather than an adversary. We try and help educate, help people know why it's important, and, and that's, that's, our tree trimming program's no exception. And so, through that process of the new policy, some of the things that were added last year was updates to our notification. You know, we listened to our residents, a lot of feedback from our residents throughout the first few years of the program. And things like, a lot of people had expressed an interest in having an early notification in the fall. We were notifying in the spring before we went out to trim. We added in the policy an earlier notification in the fall, so we notify the area that we'll be trimming next spring, the previous fall, so that if there are certain species that, that are, are better trimmed during the fall, they can do it then. And it also allows for people along, to have a longer lead time if they need to make preparations, budget to have a tree trimming outfit come in, get it scheduled, those sorts of things. And then, the, the biggest component that was added in, in the policy was the, was the billing component. We set a time cap on the amount of time that city crews would spend on any given property before we started to, to keep track and bill the property owner for the work that was being conducted by the city crews. This was done in an effort to provide some parity so that we didn't have, you know, city crews spending eight hours out in front of one residence and twenty minutes in front of another, and have a disproportionate load from one residence for, for the work. And so, what Steve's going to do is just kind of run through how that program went, and, and then we'll open up for any questions you guys might have.
So, like, like Tyler said, this is the fifth year of our, of our trimming process. It's come a long way since we first started, not only how we trim the trees, you know, the techniques, the equipment. It, it really has come a long ways. These are our current notices that we put out in the fall as well as in the spring prior to beginning the trimming in that, that area. This is the site triangle, the vision triangle, notice that gets put on every, every intersection, every property that, that is on an intersection. So, two intersecting streets, each, each property gets this notice to notify them of the extra, extra trimming that needs to be done on their property.
These are door hangers?
Yeah, these are door hangers.
Okay.
So, this is what, you know, every fall we get a couple thousand printed off and go run around the, that section of town, hanging them on every door we can find. This is the section we were in this year, so this being the second time we've trimmed it in this area. I've done some guessing here. I'm pretty close, I'm pretty sure. Nine hundred and fifty properties that we inspected and notified. Over two hundred of those properties were, were on intersections, were corner lots, so they required more inspection to take place. Just to give you kind of the idea of how we go about our process, you go out in the fall, notify the area, we come back around the next spring. You know, we try to, it's kind of hard with the timing of when do you start trimming? There's obviously less, less vegetation if you start early, whereas if you could trim it early, you may not even know that you were there if you, if you look back at it a couple of months later. So, we, we try and, we've tried and tweaked the timing to get it to be the, you know, the most efficient and, you know, useful for the area. This year's spring growth was early, you know, early summer. It was really nice, early in the year, made all the vegetation just explode. So, it was not a normal year for us out there tree trimming. I think we began about beginning of May, is when we started, is when our, is when we started hanging the notifications. So, about the middle of May, we began trimming. The way we've found the best way to, to cut, we cut up the area into separate pieces, smaller chunks, as opposed to just notifying the entire area that we're going to be there in a week or two, you know, in over two weeks. We cut it up into smaller chunks, which allows it, it's a little easier to manage, easier to notify, and kind of leapfrog our way around, around the area. We use measuring sticks to measure the, the different heights, you know, the twelve feet above the road surface, eight feet above the sidewalk. We've got our, another stick that also measures the triangle, the site triangle, to make sure nothing is above three feet or below ten. And over the last five years, we've, we've gotten pretty good at moving right through the area.
It's pretty impressive when you see these guys, Walter.
So, you notify everybody in the red area last fall? And then, as you're moving into the area in the spring to do it, you notify a couple of weeks ahead of time?
Yep.
As you can see, we're going to be on your street in the next couple of weeks.
That's right, correct, yeah.
So, they get, they get notified twice, minimally.
A minimum, a minimum of, of two notifications, and then if, if there is, if there's like site triangle work that needs to happen, then those are special notifications, and so that, that requires even further outreach. And so, we really have a lot of contact and communication going through. And, you know, as we, it's one of the things we saw start to happen this year, as Steve mentioned, it's pretty impressive when you see these crews go through, because they're, they're setting up traffic control appropriately, they're, they're using all their personal protection devices, but it's also something that we've got to do quickly, because it's a lot of work to get through this. And so, we've got, we've got well-trained employees. And so, we've got, we've got well-trained employees, that's one of the things that really makes this work, they're, they're trained and certified to make the appropriate cuts on the appropriate different types of vegetation, and, and they're great with the public, it's something that obviously generates a lot of public interest when somebody's outside with a chainsaw, and so, and so, they, they really do a lot of the, you know, a lot of the frontline interaction with the city, and people's impression of our city happens with these guys that are out there on the front lines, and they do a nice job and they move through quickly, they've got their sticks at the right heights and they know exactly where they go, and they buzz right along, and it's, it's pretty impressive.
What about overhang on, on sidewalks, and I'm not talking about overhead, but infringement from the side, like somebody that's got a big rubber saddle.
I've got a couple of pictures here.
Okay.
So, this is over street, you know, that you can kind of see the curb line there, not the greatest angle to show just how terrible it was, you could barely drive a car underneath these tree limbs. After we had trimmed it there on the right, you can see a van has, has some space, you know, that's twelve feet above the road surface there, got the road back, now we can sweep it, we can, you know, get the leaves, the debris, keep that out of the storm system.
Go, go back if you don't mind, Steve.
Yeah.
And you also did the hedge on the right side of the sidewalk as part of this?
It's hard to tell if it was infringing on the sidewalk, I've got a good one here, about two slides, it shows you a good sidewalk. Here is a vision triangle that was trimmed, this wasn't-
Wow.
This wasn't actually in this year's trimming area, this would have taken obviously more than, more than a half hour to accomplish, but it's a-
Oh, yeah.
-great example of the benefit of, of, you know, this process.
You can imagine trying to make a left turn there and, and just trying to see through there, and so, yeah, it really is a safety benefit.
Here's a good sidewalk.
Here's a good sidewalk for you. And, you know, you'd be surprised how many of those we have, and you'll see people that, you know, in this situation, at least there's a green strip, you know, that, and that, that works for pedestrians, at least they're not out in the street, we have several where if the sidewalk's right adjacent to the curb, it's pushing someone out into the street, or even in this situation, if we have somebody in a wheelchair, they don't, they don't have the alternative to just go out and off-road it into the green strip, and so, it's, it's pretty important that we keep those clear.
And then finally, with alleys, you know, they're not as heavily driven as a roadway, but still many times, it's the access to people's homes, it's, you know, where their garbage cans are at, emergency access, we've got to keep those open too. This one was overgrown to the point where it was pushing, more or less pushing the alley to the other side, it's probably still on the city's right-of-way, but it had realigned the alley because it was so overgrown, and we were able to, to get that back.
And so, you know, with, with the results of the program, a couple things have happened, one, you know, as I mentioned, Steve and his staff just do outstanding public outreach, and so, they're, they're really out there, it's something that, it has a lot of potential for people to be upset, and, and I didn't get a single phone call that made it into my office this year. His staff did that nice a job, that they handled everything at the staff level, explained it well to people, and people are getting used to it, we've done it consistently enough now, which is the reason that we've been, I've been contacted by a few different cities in the area that know of this program and have asked us to send them information, because they'd like to, to look at adopting it, because it's, once you have people used to it and it's a consistent thing, it's not as big a deal. The second, third time you get that notice, you know it's coming, you know what you have to do, and, and it just isn't as big a deal. With, with the implementation of this year's program, we did not have a single property that we had to seek reimbursement from.
I was gonna ask you, how many took more than a half hour?
Not one. We, there were some that we, what, what we did is when we went through, if we anticipated that we would, then we gave them a subsequent notification and said, hey, your, your property is estimated to take more, and, and we will seek reimbursement if we have to do it and set a hard date, and we didn't have any that at that point did not take care of the trimming themselves.
Meaning, they did it themselves?
They did themselves, yep.
Because just, just to clarify, trimming of this type, whether it's intersections, sidewalks, curb lines, is the responsibility of the property owner per city ordinance?
That is correct.
And we're just doing it because we can, we know how to do it right, we can do it quick, we can clean it up, and we have a lot less fights probably.
When, and, yeah, and that's exactly it, Walter, our, our, our goal really with the trimming program is to act as inspectors rather than trimmers. We go through, we conduct inspection, when there's minor things that we just need to clean up real quick, it's, as you said, it's more efficient for us to buzz through if we've got to get this one little limb, this little branch here, clear this up, then it's quicker for us to go through.
Than to talk about it.
Exactly. But with the big lengthy ones, that was part of the council policy, was to get us out of the big-time trimming business, and this appears to have successfully done that, in